Immediately to local government. Because data connect is a really important event to start really raising the profile, bringing the thinking and positioning. Data as a profession, as a topic across, obviously it's quite a lot about central government, but actually across public services as a whole. And so I was a local government officer over 10 years ago. And I wanted to have this session, if I'm not people WhatsApp and my apologies. Because it kind of really bugged me ever since I was in local government. Because it's an area of public service where I think you don't have to be a data professional. You don't have to be a data scientist to sort of imagine the power that data could have in a local government setting. And I, I looked up, we used to talk quite a lot, Sam, about I think called place when I was in, I don't sort of hear it quite as much anymore. But the definition of place, which was a place based approach to our communities means understanding the issues in connections and relationships in a place and coordinating action and investment to improve the quality of life for that community. In that definition, both data and councils, I would think would be cornerstone of a place based approach. So that's for me, what makes it so, what makes it so interesting. And we are going to be open, I can be more open than you, so it's a bit easier for me. We didn't get anywhere near that when I was in local government. It was a kind of nirvana that we strove for, but we didn't get anywhere near it. So I'm, that was the reason for wanting someone like you, an absolute expert in data, who's now been in local government for some time as well. And what we're going to do is Sam's going to talk about, obviously she'll introduce herself in a second, but she'll talk about her role, about the Wiltshire County Council's aspirations for data. I guess why the role came about and what they, what they foresee could happen as a result of it. What has worked well so far? And we've got a really good example in there, I think, for a council about how to start with data science and some work you've been doing on natural language processing that I feel like feels like a real achievement and is worth sharing. The challenges, and we know there have been some, and this is a kind of open and honest forum. And everyone knows that no organisation is a truly master their data at this stage. So it'd be useful environment to have that conversation. And within the challenges, I think we'll talk about talent, governance, technology, leadership. And then finally, basically where Sam sees data and local government going in the future. So that's quite a broad area. But if we start, Sam, if you could perhaps introduce yourself first, maybe a little bit free, because your, your route into data is slightly unusual as well. So it'd just be interesting to hear a bit about your route into it. And then maybe if you could introduce the county and the council as well, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So hi, everyone. Really happy to be here today and get to talk about what we're doing at Wiltshire Council. And I feel like I've gone on the receiving end of a lot of webinars about local authority data. So it's amazing to feel like we can give back to that space now. So I, I, it is a bit of an unusual route to data, but actually a lot of people that we meet and recruit, they are coming to data as a second career. And I think there's so, so much power in that ability to translate your, your previous careers learning into a data career. I used to be a primary school teacher and it maybe is a little bit of a cop out that I say I got into data by mistake. But we as a family had relocated to North Yorkshire. And I was looking for a new teaching role and I came across the role of education, innovation and intelligence analyst at North Yorkshire County Council. And so for me, this was my, my entry level role and that was back at the beginning of 2019. I did have a bit of a head start in terms of a mathematical background from my engineering degree, but I'd always been fascinated by pupil data and kind of that, that performance related aspect in my work as a teacher. And for me, this entry level role was the exact right soil that I needed to become a competent data professional. It was such a rich environment for learning. And I think that's so true of local authorities that they are really supportive of people who want to learn skills. It gave me my first exposure to Power BI as a tool. And I was able to sit with their data and intelligence team ran by John Kelly, who is amazing. And this amazing, inspiring environment, it really just started me off on, on an exciting data career. And it was my first chance to meet data scientists and to understand what a career in data science could look like. And I was like, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to be doing. In terms of Wiltshire, we are a predominantly rural unitary authority. So we have about 510,000 people. We're a strong conservatory. I think our, the second party is liberal democrats. We, I think in terms of our challenges that are Wiltshire, we have a aging population that's expected to increase hugely by 2040. We, we are in the least deprived 30% of local authorities, but we do have small pockets of deprivation. So I think we've got eight LFOs which are in the lowest quintile of the deprivation. And there's a brilliant website, the Wiltshire Intelligence website, which I'm hoping one of my team will put a link to in the chat, where that's made by our public health intelligence team. So if you want to know anything about the Wiltshire context, this is a really great example of the insight that that team is delivering. So I think we are obviously like all other councils, having that financial challenge at the moment. So I think it's, that's, that kind of underlies a lot of the conversations that are happening at the moment.
Brilliant, thank you for that introduction. And I realised, I arrogantly didn't introduce myself either. I think that was because I trod on my dog and got, my brain went all over the place. So sorry, I should say, I'm James Herbert and I'm CEO of a company called Pivotil, which is a specialist in data, which does some local government work. But all of us in Pivotil have a background in local government. So that's why we, we always come back to this topic. So we had some questions, sort of agreed and discussed Samantha, and I'm immediately going to throw one in there that we didn't have on the list. So sorry about that in advance. But what did, was your role, was it already created, you know, was there already a person who did your role at Wiltshire who left? Or was it created and then you went for it and got it? And if it was created, why?
So I think our team, so we, we're the data and insight team and we exist on the work of so many different people over maybe the last 10 years. So there was a huge amount of business cases that got put forward in succession to, to promote the need for a centralised kind of business intelligence function. And we, we have a lot of data assets, I'd say scattered across the wider data ecosystem. So we have, you know, really well established performance functions. We've got our brilliant public health intelligence team. I've put the link in the chapter to their website. But so we have, we have a lot of really well established functions. We also have quite a lot of, I'd say like quite isolated data roles and services. But ours is the first that's essentially, I see it's like a neutral function that works across all directorates. We were initially started in IT. I came onto the team as the senior analyst, but because we didn't really have much of a feature for growth, currently at the time, at that time Becky, who was amazing, now works at RNLI. They, we were then moved into transformation, which I think has really helped us to get a bit more central visibility in the team. And our director of transformation, Stu Honeyball, has been such an amazing advocate for the use of data within transformation. So a lot of our functions, resources go towards focusing on the, the transformation projects that come through the transformation pipeline. So we are, we have, do you have scope for supporting other pieces of work? But we, we are generally trying to work for things that are a specific transformation project.
And that idea of data sitting in a central team as opposed to lots of pockets, was that a thing you had to fight for? Or was there, was there a kind of knowledge either amongst members or maybe directors that that was the way to go?
Yeah, I think there'd been, there'd definitely been a kind of internal view for a long time and I had a lot of external kind of contractors that had come in to review what our data ecosystem was. And it was a widely accepted view that there's things that we need to look at more centrally. And that seeing data as an organisational asset was, was that next space in our data maturity journey? What we lack at the moment is a sort of data specific C-suite executive. So we don't have a CDO. And I think that's where some of our challenges come from, that we're all in these individual places. We're about to start trying to socialise a data strategy. But in terms of having that, you know, specific executive sponsor that can help us tie all that together. So it's that kind of careful negotiating stage that we're in at the moment of trying to, to be able to enact specific things going forward. But I think it's, when I look at a lot of the local authorities, they all have had very different journeys into, into how that progresses. And I think if we look at more mature authorities like Essex, I'd say we're kind of aligned to where they used to be, maybe like five, 10 years ago. And I think it's, it's really interesting for us and so useful to have conversations with other local authorities about why did they make these decisions to maybe amalgamate certain functions? And why did they, you know, what, what was the rational business decision that prompted that? So it's, we're still very much learning and I think it's speaking to those other local authorities and events like this are so useful to understand what are the people, you know, why have they made those choices?
Right. And just to be clear, so CDO, you mean a chief data officer?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Just because there's some chief digital officer as well, so chief data officer. But you don't have one of those, but you do have a data strategy as a council.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, go on.
So that's, that's my current job at the moment. So we've, we've recently written a draft data strategy and we've been engaging with stakeholders to get feedback on it. So before Christmas, we're going to be going out with sort of our new version and socialising it. And it's, it's kind of our strategic plan for what we want to achieve in the next sort of three years.
Brilliant, brilliant. And in the, in the bringing together of the team, what were the specific ambitions for that, that, you know, in exchange for bringing it together and supporting it? What did the council think that it was going to, it was going to get in exchange in practical terms?
So I think we, we've said previously that councils have a huge amount of data. And I think we don't make it work hard enough for us. And I think having a centralised team is that ability to work across directorates. And I think what, you know, so like in Harry Potter world, you've got the Weasleys and the Weasley house, it's grown all sort of higgledy piggledy. And to me, that's what our data ecosystem looks like. We've got all of these, and I don't say that with any judgement, that's just how organisations like ours grow. And we've got all these different maturity functions that are using data and some, they are, they know exactly how to get value out of it. They've got a really great system and others don't. They feel, they feel like their data responsibilities are a burden. They don't know, they don't have the latest skills and training to access it. So we want to be essentially a centre of excellence to support, A, those functions and their own skill development and getting the best out of the data, but also joining up our architecture so that we can approach things like single view. But also it's about us being, you know, technically excellent and leading from the front into, into data science. But for me, it's really about that empowering other people to go on that data journey themselves. So there's a lot of data literacy plans that we have in place going forward. And I'm glad people like the Weasley house, I'm a big Harry Potter fan. But I think it's the, you know, how do we do that from a central position where maybe we don't have the executive bind to kind of say to people, you need to do this, this is the, this is the next step for you in the journey. So it's, we're kind of having to go up to come down again. And it's, if we had that one position, I, I'm not sure what other councils have in that place, but it's, it seems like it might be a natural development in the future.
Really interesting. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place now for our questions, but that's fine. Did you, did you, without that central executive, I suppose, sponsoring, as you got in there, did you, and became a central team, did you pick off one of those business areas that you wanted to enable to prove it out and to be able to show? Or was it more about, no, we need to get members, execs, et cetera, all on board in order to do anything?
So I think this is probably quite project dependent, but one area that I think we're gonna, we're feeling really confident in terms of our ability to do data transformation and actually diffuse genuine innovation is within HR. So we've recently absorbed Percy Butcher, she's our new workforce insight analyst. So we've absorbed this role from HR, it wasn't in our initial structure. So that in itself is a really exciting development for our team. And I think it speaks to the good work of the team that we're now absorbing other roles. But that ability to have a really fresh look at existing reporting, we know that the, the previous role, there was a huge amount of ad hoc reporting, lots of very manual kind of data work. So our first job is migrating those kind of existing Excel reports into Power BI. And there's so many data science things we want to explore about employee feedback. And so with our natural language processing. But we've also got another role coming into the team, which is going to be oracle facing. But between those two roles, I had a really exciting chat with our solutions architect this morning, actually, it's that kind of future plan of creating single view of an employee. So I think HR, we've got an incredibly supportive director at their really open to exploring new ideas in the space. They're very forthcoming about embedding our analysts within that. So they get that kind of contextual knowledge. And it's, I just feel so excited and it's just such a great kind of soil to land that innovation in. And I think it's that, you know, we don't see that in all areas, but it's, I think it's that kind of openness to exploring and actually just having those conversations in the first place and being really open about what are the headaches with data. And, and I think that, that also requires the data function to not just focus on data literacy, but it's what effort do we put to learn business literacy? And actually trying to meet them in the middle and speak their language. And I think HR is, is going to become our kind of first, like we've got ownership over this reporting, we're going to show what good looks like. And I think all the team are really excited to see how that, how that works out. But Kirsty is on the call and I think about four days in, so no pressure Kirsty.
So it's a really good point that, isn't it? Because I follow, we all go into our kind of own echo chambers. So I follow lots of data engineers, data thinkers, obviously that's what our company does. And we all get frustrated because the exec just don't get it. And we know, and this isn't in local government particularly, this is pretty much everywhere. We know that unless you are enabled, there's a kind of limit to how much you can scale. But I think it's great to be reminded by someone that the onus is on us as a profession to get them to understand why what they do in terms of data is really important. So that's just, it's a great reminder. I'm just going to go back, there's a couple of questions and I'm trying to sort of just keep the conversation flowing, but keep an eye on those as well. Because you were talking about HR and HR is often about people, someone asked a question and you have alluded to it is, how do you approach data literacy, data literacy within the wider council? And I was just going to ask, what is, how would you describe the data literacy at Wiltshire? Have you got any formulaic systematic ways where you've analysed and assessed it? And how would you approach it, I suppose, in growing it?
So Kirsty, our senior insight analyst has put a bit of a response to that in the chat. But to me, it's, I'd say that it's very variable. And I think when you talk to people about different literacy, data literacy, sorry, you come back with so many different answers about what it actually is. And I think we really need to kind of dissect our approach depending on what role people are in, actually, you know, what kind of existing skill level. So the first thing we're going to be doing is a bit of an assessment of our, our sort of colleagues and data and actually understanding, you know, where they are. But to be able to do that, we ourselves have to decide what are the kind of core competencies that we're looking for? And what, what does a data literate professional look like in this day and age? Like what tools are is the base expectation? So I think it's, it's quite variable depending on what directorate we're engaging with, because we do have very variable data maturity. And one thing that I'm, I'm really interested in exploring is the language of data. So I think, you know, we look at the, the increase and talk about GNI that we've seen in the last few months. To me, there's this, this huge amount of new vocabulary that we just have to kind of democratised for our organisation. And people, I think, can be really overwhelmed when they're, when they're reading about technological development at the moment, because there's so many new words. And if you, if you don't explicitly teach these to your organisation and what they mean for them, and how can you even begin to approach the opportunities that these tools can unlock? So I think it's, data literacy become, has, it feels like a lot trickier question in the last year, because I think to being data literate, what our expectation of employees has moved on so much than say five years ago. We, I think our team had a bit of a culture shock almost. Kirsty and Josh went to an event in London last year, I think data for government. And they met a professional that had never worked in Excel. She'd gone straight into Power BI and she hadn't even thought of trying to work in Excel. So it's, there's people coming into the workplace now that for them Excel is, you know, they don't need it, they aren't going to use it. So it's, what, what does a modern, you know, data professional look like? But I think when we think about business users as well, the managers who are going to be engaging with the, the technical products you're delivering, what level of data literacy do they need? And it's such a skill, I think, we talk a lot about the importance of good communication. And I think that skill to get business users uplevelled in the kind of different ways of engaging with, say like a Power BI dashboard, you have to again, have a very different vocabulary to, if you're working with a data professional. So I think these are things that we're going to learn a lot more about in the next sort of three months as we roll out our, our data training. But I think as well, it's in data literacy, I think anyone who creates training, they know it takes a huge amount of time to create good quality resources. And I think we're so lucky that there are a range of courses and materials that we can lean on in this space. So Kirsty's talked about some ONS materials. We've also seen a lot of great ideas come out of the data science campus that we absolutely love. And it's, I think it's about looking in that public sector space. Like some people are making some great products, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But I think it's so important as well to look at the Wiltshire context, like what do Wiltshire people need to learn? And I think making it contextual, sorry, the lights have gone now, I'm beginning to get a bit shadowed. You know, what, what is a meaningful context to be able to deliver this training in? And it's, it's probably quite a big ask to deliver, you know, bespoke training all the time. But if you're working with a particular director, can you make it meaningful to them? So I think it's, you know, finding something engaging to centre those skills around is, I think it's, previous being a teacher, maybe that's, that's inflicting my own opinion here, but it's, I think learning should be really fun and engaging. And I can't wait to see what we, we start putting out there in the next few months.
Excellent. I think it was, I don't know if it was your colleague that said that aiming to work alongside the digital transformation programme with a data literacy project involving self-assessment, data literacy and a data champion, is that, that's Wiltshire?
Yeah.
Got it, got it. And so the data training, you're, you look for a 10, an uptake of 10% of employees to upskill. And have you, in that, in that plan for the training and upskilling, have you done it by group, you know, is it certain personas, types of role, you, you know, I can't remember in the CDO one, I think this, is it, how many levels is it for? I can't remember, but there's different levels that are defined. Do you, do you look at the different directorates and say, you know, someone in adult social care in this role would ideally need to be at this kind of level?
Yeah, definitely. So we have got some meetings booked in where we're going to be identifying change agents within specific, specific directorates. So as we begin to establish that community of practice around data literacy, we want to target key people and, and actually have a planned in approach for those people of how can we engage with them, what is meaningful to them? And it's identifying those people who can then go and be a champion with their own services. There's definitely specific services and directorates that we would absolutely need to be part of that to be, you know, gain that momentum and be influential. But I think a lot of, I think the common challenge of establishing like a community around something is that it has to be a two-way engagement. And we're a really small team, there's only 10 of us. But it's that we, we can put out great content, we can engage with the right people, but there has to be an appetite for organisationally. And I think if you're speaking into that vacuum, then your message is never going to land and you're never going to get that momentum. So I think that's why we have to target the right people and provide something engaging and add value. You know, people have so little time at the moment. If you're not adding value, you can't expect them to, to want to engage. And I think that's kind of a common issue of trying to create any, any community in an organisation like ours. But it's, we want to go to them with a really planned out approach rather than kind of hoping it all, it all mature and hoping we get that engagement. It's, we, we have a plan and yeah, it's very exciting.
And that, that links to a question that Hazel Jordan's asked actually, which is, I remember this, is that in, in a council, because a council's like lots of different businesses really, isn't it? It's not one, it's not one thing. And it tends to get quite dominated by certain of those businesses. And Hazel's asked about engaging with the smaller directorates and functions, those that, I'm just going to scroll down traditionally, da, 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 do not use data or maybe don't, maybe don't realise they're using it in some respects. Do you, do you have to kind of have a set stakeholder engagement plan and make sure you're covering everyone?
Yeah, so we are, our analysts are assigned generally to specific transformational programmes. So for example, Josh is aligned to our custom experience transformation. So that's, that works across many directorates. But there are definitely, I'd say, areas where we haven't engaged too much rather than in specific projects. So we, we've had some really interesting engagement around translation from the ethnic honourity team. And, but that's not a kind of directorate that we are specifically engaging with through the transformation programmes. But we were supporting leisure and libraries and waste, we're supporting adult social care. But it's tricky because we're such a small team. It's, do we work in kind of a thin layer across all directorates? Or do we try and make a really big impact in specific programmes? But I, I could double the team and still feel like we're not making as much impact with data. We're also still at the stage, we, we've only just recruited our last person. So we're, I'd still say we're just about to become fully functional as, as a team. But I think it's that, oh, I've lost train of thought. Oh yeah, so we're still, we're still getting up to that speed where we're really adding value back into the organisation. But, and because of that, we're still responding to specific demand. Whereas what I want to do going forward is, is to be able to carve out some percentage of our resource that we are then able to say, we have identified this opportunity. So the other day, we, we heard of the context where it was a tricky question around roads and infrastructure and roads and planning routes and things. And to me, I was like, that was a search algorithm, that is graph theory. But because we were kind of behind the problem, so it's, it's how do we get in front of these business context things that to me, data science, like we, we should be, we should be exploring that, but we're not quite there kind of maturity wise. But yeah, so it's, I think we're, we want to have a bit more ability to define our own projects. But we're, what we're doing at the moment is really focusing on adding value in the, the small kind of specific programmes that we can to show people what we think good looks like and, and to sort of wider broadcast the skills in Power BI and what's possible in Python. And then hopefully that will kind of give us that platform to then say, we think we could do this with your data. So it's, it's a bit of a chicken egg at the moment.
Yeah, no, that, that reactive problem for data teams, I think very common. I was reading about a lady the other day who, and she's in a, she was in a large tech business in the US and she, I think it's one of the best uses of AI actually. She created an AI to respond to ad hoc data requests so that her team could get on with the strategic data work that they need to do. And it, it works so well, she's, she's turned it into a business. But I think it's quite a common challenge. Just to say, someone's asked if they could get a recording of this because they have to go away and deal with an issue. So just to reiterate, this will be recorded and I think shared after to everyone attending. So, so no problems there. And also to say, I will go through everyone, I'll leave time to go through all the questions at the end, the ones we haven't answered. And also I love the fact, they're brilliant, that they're not just questions, they're actual people sharing experiences and things that they've done as well. So please keep those coming. I'm sure that's really, really helpful for everyone. Right, I'm going to take us back onto the script a little bit Samantha, you'll be happy to know. I, let's, let's slight, slight switch of sort of track here. But let's talk about your, I think we framed it as where to start with data science, didn't we? And this quite successful adventure you've been on with NLP and various other things and resident voice, did you want to just talk about that for a bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things I'm keen to, to move forward with this team, we know that there's a huge amount of, of data engineering that we need to focus on. And I've just seen questions around data quality. To me, that, that's, you know, that has to be the first priority. And we've got that layer of business intelligence, we really need to improve as well. But for me, we need to also be looking forward and kind of, how do we improve our organisation's ability to leverage data science tools and skills? And actually create an environment that is going to be able to attract those, the, the data roles of the future that we are, you know, unable to anticipate at the moment. But I think when we initially thought about this, the, the breadth of where you could go in data science, it's, it's just unending. And you know, how do you focus on particular models? Do you, do you focus on a particular directorate? And one thing that we, I think we've got really right for our organisation is focusing on natural language processing. So we know that the resident voice is crucial to so, so much of improving our service delivery. And we do get a lot of resident feedback. Text is something that all services are trying to get value out. And we know that it costs a huge amount of human resource at the moment to, to find insight. And we've got lots of people spending weeks and weeks manually trying to categorise text and, you know, find fun meaning in quite slow ways and expensive ways. I think anything that costs us time is, is too expensive. And so this has really enabled us to kind of focus where we want to start developing those skills. And we, we've had some really interesting successes with this and we're working towards a bank of reusable scripts around those key natural language processing things. But one, one, one of our first explorations of this was around our employee experience survey. So this is something that HR do regularly to, to get feedback on lots of different things. And, and you know, one of the things we want to know is the reasons why people might not feel safe or happy to report bullying, harassment or discrimination. And we used topic modeling and we were able to look at the variance between reasons for different demographic groups. And that was so much quicker than reading through all those comments and trying to understand. And obviously there are things that you need to read as a human, but these natural language processing methods, they enable us to get to the heart of, of lots and lots of text a lot quicker. So we can better and more quickly respond to the, the key messages of what people are So we can better and more quickly respond to the, the key messages of what people are trying to tell us as an organisation. And, and I feel like that as much as we've done, we've still only dipped our toe into what's possible. And you know, there's translation, there's NER, there's, there's so much. And even, even just basic sentiment analysis, that is so useful to services because they're, they're trying to do these in quite manual ways. So I feel like that's something where it feels like we've made a really good choice there. And it's, it's so great seeing the team learning skills. So Josh is our, our NLP wizard. And, and you know, we were reflecting the other day on, on where he was six months ago saying, print well, print hello world. And now he's, he's advising his transformation programme about where NER could be useful to their, to their, you know, getting, understanding resident feedback on the website. So it's in six months, that's a huge new skill that we've created for the council. And it's, I'm so excited to see where we're going to use that as well. There's, there's so many exciting applications, for example, in care records. There's some really great projects that we're hearing about, about getting information out of care records. And, and you know, that kind of, to help that predictive insight into early intervention, which as, as we have an aging population, like how, how do we, how do we make those decisions faster and better? And yeah, just so excited to see what else we can do. But again, we have the, as we explore any new method, there's the appropriate governance and data security and data protection that we need to consider. So as an organisation, we're looking, how do we embed these skills in a way that IG are, are happy that we've, we've thought of all these barriers? And IT as well in terms of the, the use of Python. So we've got lots of ideas, but it's, we're trying to bring, we're trying to do it in a way that the organisation is coming with us rather than us just being like, let's go, let's charge, let's do all these exciting things. It, it has to be in a way that is sustainable with the ambitions of your organisation.
I love that. And, and that's, I can hear the enthusiasm of your voice. So I'm going to be a real buzzkill now because you mentioned the word governance. So in terms of, I think probably everyone on this call knows that often current ways of governing things in organisations may not really work very well for modern, what people want to do in a modern data environment. So in that particular example, will you, can it be, can appropriate governance be extrapolated out from that example? Where, and, and would there be a plan to sort of change data governance at the council? Or do you have to really just fit in into a, you know, 40-year-old way of governing things?
So we've got a brilliant information governance function. And at the moment, we are very much trying to align the way that we work with their, their way of working. And I think there is scope though, potentially going forward, that the way that we may need to use data, we may need to work towards adjusting processes in terms of having kind of more blanket I A C R processes rather than having individual ones as per every element of our project, more having one that's agreed at that service level. And another thing that potentially we need to explore is, at the moment, there's a lot of quite strict processes around. And I think, I'm sure this is similar for other organisations, that you're looking to access this exact data to do this exact process, to get this exact outcome. And I think in some of our definitely data science explorations that we want to do, we maybe aren't 100% sure what all of the data we want to form a model with is. We, we wanted to test a range of methods. We don't know if it's going to be successful until we've tested. So I think there's that, that level of like exploration. And I'm sure there are ways that other organisations have tackled this, but we're not quite there in, in terms of maturity yet. But I think as well that we maybe want to apply specific mathematical methods, or especially when we get into the world of machine learning, where we do need access to real level data. And a lot of where organisation, we feel comfortable at the moment is giving access to aggregates or statistical summaries. And we know that there's things that we may want to apply in terms of a mathematical method, but we can't do that to aggregates and we can't do that to just school summaries. So it's, I think there's, we need to be better communicating actually why we need access to, say, real level data in, in a case rather than them kind of thinking, oh, that's, that's far too much access to information, you don't need to go to that granularity. So I think there's a bit of a conversation and I'm sure, you know, those will occur within those given projects. But it's, I think there's, we need to educate the organisation, kind of the changing ways that we want to work with data.
And what's, what's next for your natural language processing then is, has it been, can, people can see the benefits? I'm interested in particular, Richard's asked how members are engaged. Because my experience was always that with new stuff, you really need strong member support. Have they seen enough to say this is one of our strategic approaches to data and we're going to roll it out across other areas?
We, we haven't put Python in front of members just yet, but we are about to show them the exciting world of Power BI. So Kirsty, our senior analyst on the call, she's been working really hard on a, a business plan scorecard, which is going to show members kind of a, a different way to engage with business plan reporting. So we're anticipating that this will, will help start their conversation more and, and actually just open their eyes to maybe other areas of reporting that they may want to, to move this. But we, I am very keen to, to kind of promote more the NLP use. And we are getting a lot of approaches now that, that people have seen the work out in the wild as such. And that, and we're trying to keep it within kind of the transformational programmes that we're working on at the moment. But the, the longer term ambition is to have sustainable reusable scripts, actually have specific version environments geared up for NLP, have, you know, GitHub repository that the organisation can, can take advantage of. So that it's not just we're working in isolation and products, we're, we're creating a platform that enables and empowers other analysts to get the best out of their own text data. And, and I think it's, it's about creating that kind of centralised place that that can happen. We're working on the governance towards that and, and kind of what's the best tool to go within kind of our cost that, that is acceptable at the moment. And, but yeah, it's, and I think, I'm sure anyone who has worked in Python, you, you'll make a script and then you'll review it and you've discovered a new package that could be used. And I think we're still, we're still working as a team to kind of explore what's the best way that we consider as a team to, to employ these different methods. And, and I think data is changing so much. Already in the six month, there's a, a range of new natural, natural language processing. And you know, large language models that are changing what is possible. And so there's, there's lots of things we want to explore around kind of like the, the large language model APIs. So can we, can we build things that help residents engage with all of the policy that we have? Can we build things that help our employees get an easier understanding? And kind of that kind of Gen AI interface into all of the, you know, many, many policy documents that we have as a council. But it's, it's these all, it's almost like we have to, we can't just go off and explore these techniques because they're cool and interesting. We want to have fun in Python, but we have to, it has to be within the confines of business value and context. And it's, we're funding at the moment, it's, do we wait for that business problem to come to us or do we go looking for them? So that's where we're trying to, to get to, that we've got time and space in our, in our sprints to actually get out there a bit more and, and talk to people about and help kind of, help people understand what is possible. And but also have a space to hear the specific problems and see if we can join those up. And but yeah, I'm, I'm really excited to, to work more on NLP and I know the team are, so it's, yeah, can't wait to see what we've got done in a year.
Excellent. And just because you mentioned GitHub before, Tim from Hackney and Hackney are very strong on the kind of application of government digital approaches. Have you, do you have public, are there any public, is your work stored publicly anywhere that people could share? Or, or if you're obviously not new heads, perhaps the answer to that's no. Are you aware, and this is my ignorance, is whether there's a, a national kind of local government library somewhere of the things that people are working on around data? I don't know whether that's in, in place, sorry if, if it is.
I know. So what we want to work towards is sharing more of our work where possible within governance. And there are other local authorities and for example, the data science campus that they are sharing some great products out there on GitHub. And, and we want to become one of that club. And but in terms of a joined up, I think that would be an amazing idea. And I think we feel that there's a lot in place already for analysts and, and definitely a, a growing kind of more centralised look at data science, but where I think we don't have that community so much as data engineering. And I think as we're, it might just be because we're really focused on single view at the moment, that kind of collective local authority group. And it's, I know it's, I think I can't count how many conversations our different members of our team have had with amazing people like Bob Bunce at Cornwall. You know, it's a really supportive environment out there, but in terms of actually centralising that understanding between local authorities, we're all, we're all grappling with quite similar systems, a very similar kind of challenge and, and context as well. So I think there's so much more benefit to be had by having more conversations in that space.
Your team are so on the ball that I keep on asking you questions that they've already answered, so apologies for that, just trying to flip quick as I go. Right, that time we need a little bit, we're coming towards the end, we need a bit of controversy. So there's some comment on there about structured and unstructured data. Now normally, we think of unstructured data as being harder to do, I'm sorry. Yes, unstructured data has been harder to do stuff with unstructured. However, and again, I can say this, you can't, local government has been pretty much held hostage by some fairly well-known line of business applications for the last, well, we're probably going on for 20 years now, 20, 25 years, which are not known for their quality of their openness, either technically or commercially, which tends to make doing stuff with data in those applications very difficult. And those applications are kind of where the big bang for the buck is, you know, they're the big, the, the big beasts of the local government application estate. Are you, does that influence, is that a problem? And does that influence what you might pick to look at data-wise? In other words, maybe we look at unstructured data and open sources of data and things where we don't have to go and engage with that beast, which is, you know, at least a generation away from being probably resolved. How, how do you kind of tackle that problem?
Yeah, so we are definitely exploring more API use and, and just kind of different ways of accessing data. What we find at the moment in terms of barriers is that a lot of the line of business systems, at that procurement stage, there was potentially conversations that, missing potentially where not enough thought was given to, how do you get data out of that? So we can't automate, we can't schedule, and these are some of our really key systems. So in terms of being able to automate business intelligence, let alone data science, we don't always have those, the access that we would want to have. And I think sometimes in projects where like, oh, if we could automate this, we'd save people so much time. But then when you get down to the granular, it's some power automate absolute wizardry to be able to get data out of a system. But we've tackled that with trying to be involved in more commissioning decisions going forward. And actually, as an organisation, what is our standard expectation of a, of a system that's going to have our data? And you know, what, what APIs are available? Is there a schema? That's been a bit of a headache lately that we're trying to work with a very large database, but there's no schema. So it's taking a huge amount of, of human resource, more than you, you know, is essentially allowable, to actually understand where, where is the insight that you need, like how can we build a model out of this, this database? So I do think that kind of, that procurement step really limits the, you know, the ability to do the art of the possible work. And I think it's something you said to me before, that data really reflects an organisation's dysfunction. And I think I, I completely see how we end up in this situation because there's so much snake oil out there and people promise a silver bullet. And it's, it's just not, and it's, you, you know, that kind of procurement stage, it's, it, it must be terrifying when you have all these different competing vendors and we're promising everything. And if you're not a data professional, so I think it's about having someone who knows the kind of reporting that you want to get out of it and, and the kind of the data engineering requirements that, you know, in terms of what you want to align to, having them as part of that initial commissioning conversation, I think, and having a standard council response to what is your minimum expectation? Because I think if you, you've got a system, that data is going to be so, so valuable, either by itself or aligned with other data assets. And if you can't get to it, then it's, yeah, it's tricky.
It, it's so difficult, isn't it? Because even with, I remember this, we have to get so granular because even when you start talking about APIs, you know, the, the, the quality and standards around the APIs are not all equal. And you know, there are business models that sit behind that and everything else. And I think someone's answered, yeah, I was exactly capital civic or I docs, that's, that's what I was talking about. And we were discussing the other day, weren't we? I was saying, I, I was always taught that software reflects the dysfunction of your organisation, but actually data is probably a whole, a whole level on. But it's just so interesting for local government. My, my hope, my great hope for data and local government is that the promise of modern data platforms and modern data and approaches maybe reduce the importance of applications over time and that we abstract ourselves from the application layer and that actually it's about the data layer. And then you can have different business models underneath it because, so I'm only talking to give you a little bit of a break because I know it's quite hard. It's, my, my, my timer, I believed, and I think I was wrong now on reflection, was that we were, we were trying to get our council to be like one council where data flowed in and out of the contact centre, across the lines of business, back and, back and forth. But actually, we were pretty much four different organisations, you know? And actually, it's really difficult to cram everyone onto the same case management system or the same process or whatever. And I just don't know whether maybe product thinking and data, modern data platforms and tooling might give us the opportunity to, to, to acknowledge that we have different businesses within councils, but to just be able to join up the stuff that's important, that needs to be joined up, which is generally intelligence and data to make, to make decisions and where you allocate resources and stuff. So it's just a really fascinating topic. Right, I am going to, yeah, I've just opened up a can of worms, sorry about that, I knew, I knew that. And I'm just going to, because we've got 10 minutes left, I think I might just flip back through the questions if that's all right, Sam? Just to make sure we don't leave anyone, anyone out. So I'm going to go right back up. I've probably missed the very original question, but right, have you encountered the notion that aversion to the use of data can arise from the fact that data might reveal insights that challenge the employee, that go against their heuristics and challenge their existing capabilities or decision-making? And, and do you, how would you handle such cases? That's an interesting point. It's like, do we all want greater awareness of data and what we're doing?
Yeah, it does, it does kind of raise an interesting question of what level do you need to take insight to? And, but I think that comes back to having a good understanding of what is a business's requirement. And I think that has to come down from your business plan, your different strategies. And if you can't nest your technical product or your analysis within a strategy, then we shouldn't be assigning resource to it. And I think having, I think Kirsty spoke earlier about things coming under the, the digital strategy. So what we want to do is, is we're planting our data strategy within a wider transformation strategy, which is also aligned to our digital strategy. So we're trying to overcome that kind of siloed working and having strategies all over the place. And it makes it really easy for us to say, is something a meaningful piece of work that we should be doing? Has it been, you know, does it, does it align to the strategic direction? And within our, our new kind of workforce insight analyst role, all of the work we are, we are kind of planting in specific insight themes that align to our new workforce strategy. So we're trying to really ensure that it all dovetails up into some sort of strategic plan. Because I think there's, there's a real risk that we'll get really excited and say, we've got this cool thing in Python, let's go. And that, that, you know, that's natural, that's going to happen, but it's about finding opportunities to do that within a meaningful piece of work that we have that top cover to be doing.
Brilliant, thank you. It's a really interesting one from Paul up in Manchester. Our lead and established centre of excellence in Manchester, we've got a great track record using data to inform decision-making. But this has been by deploying analysts to research projects rather than using technology to automate that process. Do you think there's an ideal balance between generating outputs versus developing new tools and products? I'm trying to move to 60, 40. Is that, is that sort of you think in those terms as well about your team?
Yeah, so that's definitely a kind of ratio that we would want to get towards. Like I want our team to be doing innovation work and actually using their skills and identifying those opportunities for data innovation themselves. And because we're a new team, in one way, we're lucky because we, we've done something that I think is really hard to do in a council is actually start something completely new. We aren't amalgamated from old functions, we don't have any kind of hangover of old organisational process or anything. So we are starting completely from scratch, which to me is like really exciting. But what it does mean is that we don't have a reputation, we don't have an established place in the, the wider ecosystem. So for us, we have to establish our, our reputation for doing really good work. And we always say, just focus on doing good work and that reputation will come in time and it has, and it is growing really well. And but I think what we then need to take over into is that carving out resource in our sprints for, we are now doing innovation. And we've got a innovation day planned in next week, which is actually off the back of the ONS and data science camp webinar about APIs and Power BI. So it's, it's really exciting to see how that's kind of helping us on that journey. But at the moment, we're kind of going to have to be focusing on innovation days to, to generate original new products. But essentially, I want us to get to the point where we're, we're leading business in terms of, these are techniques that are available now. We have the skills, we have the governance to use them, we think we could really apply it in this, in this context. So that graph theory, search algorithm case, in the future, I want to be in front of that problem and saying, ah, this is a data science problem. Let's work to solve it and let's get that ML ops pipeline up and running. But for us, we have to look, we have to look at the long game, that we're brand new. We have to establish that organisational reputation and, and actually that kind of governance type agreements with specific services to, to get to that point to be able to do innovation. And I think one thing that's been a bit of a learning curve for me is that just because we have a great idea and it might be one that aligns to a strategic decision, it might be one that we've got the skills and the team to employ, it's no guarantee that anyone's going to listen to you. And I think it's that, the real innovation challenge is, it's not so much the idea itself, it's actually going from talking about, these are great things we could be doing, to actually being able to do them. And that's the kind of where we are challenge wise at the moment. And it's that kind of diffusing that innovation, like being able to actually socialise and manage that change. Like change management, I think it's become a huge part of all of our roles. And that was a bit of a unanticipated skill set that I thought the team was going to need to develop. I'm sure more experienced leaders out there are thinking, of course, of course, that's something you're going to need to be doing. But for me as an analyst, it was like, oh my gosh, like this is a whole new skill set we need to learn. And it's, you know, I think there's that kind of disconnect between how an analyst or data people stereotypically think. You know, we value meritocracy, reason-based judgment and, and actually the kind of different level of abstraction that business uses. And it's, it's about actually learning how to navigate that to implant your ideas. And that's kind of the, the space where we are at the moment.
Right. Now, on the call, we've got about four minutes left, but on the clock, we've actually got about eight minutes left. So I'll carry on to. So I'll carry on to half past five and I hope we don't get cut off, uh, on the hour exactly. Apologies if we do. Um, John Dorian says, some organisations, including Microsoft, are investing resources in upskilling subject matter experts. Is part of your plan at Wiltshire to embed your data staff into teams, uh, to help educate the business subject matter experts?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something that Kirsty and I, our senior analysts, were actually talking about earlier today. And that kind of, um, how do we develop the directorate level context and how do we in, improve our relations with that? So, um, at the moment, our sort of, our five analysts are embedded in, um, specific transformation programmes, which generally align to one or two key directories. So we're going to start trying to, um, engage with those directors a bit more in the future around going to their S and Ts. And, and kind of making that conversation a bit more two-way. Um, but I think it's that, that context takes a while to, to, to grow. And it, it's kind of that understanding where their pain points are and, and where you can solve that with your work. But I think that comes naturally from just spending time together. So we really value, um, being able to, to co-locate and co-produce pieces of work. And I think it's understanding what data assets do they have in their, in their structure at the moment. And for some directors, they don't have any. And it's, it's someone who's kind of data's become a bit of an arm or a leg to their role. Whereas others, they have an established data function. So it's, I think it's about being able to review what, what do you have to work within that directory? And, and where is the, the kind of capabilities at the moment? And for them, you know, what is their view of the context? And I think it's that, you know, understanding who are the best people to engage with. Um, I think we, we've got that right in terms of our work with HR. So, um, our new analyst is going to be, um, spending time with the, the business partners. And she's been so welcomed by HR. So I feel like that, that ability to gain the con, to the contextual understanding is, is going to be really kind of, um, kind of natural as that role devotes, whereas others, I think we're going to have to architect it a bit more formally. But I think it's that kind of where we're lots of different businesses, that engagement is going to look very different.
Excellent. Now, there's a brilliant question here that I really want to ask, but I don't, I don't think with three minutes to go, it's going to work. It's about integrated care systems, whi- which is just such a, the I C S is actually is a whole issue, I think, on its own. So apologies, um, to Tom, because it is a great question. Maybe, I don't know whether maybe we're placing data connector, perhaps do that as a whole, as a whole thing. Maybe because we've already mentioned, uh, power and it's a, um, a smaller topic, as it were, a more contained topic. Is there a strategy to be less dependent on Microsoft Power Platform? It, you know, I guess, I guess to broaden that out a bit is sort of, how do you link in with a broader technology strategy? Is that just with working with I T? Is it written down? Who makes the decisions?
Yeah. So I think this question is really great time for me because I, I, I had a meeting with our solutions architect this morning to talk about our five-year technology plan. So we really want to maximise the investment that the council's made on our power platform. So, um, not only are we growing kind of Power B I, Python skills, um, Josh, who's on the call, he is becoming our, our power app and power automate wizard as well. So we're looking at how can we use the platform for, for better data operations from a range of angles. Um, and there's functions that we aren't really using as a council. So adaptive card, for example, this is something we're also going to be exploring to be able to do kind of longitudinal studies. So I think there's an amazing range of tools there. Um, we do want to explore Python, obviously. Um, and it's about what is the best setup, um, within kind of the, the, the budget that we have, you know, Anaconda or Jupiter Lab, like, and the kind of differing, uh, governance and security conditions of those. And so it's, I don't want to be, I don't want us to ever be tool agnostic. I think we have to look at what is the business problem and what is the best tool within our skill set at the current time that we have to solve that. And I think sometimes we get a bit too focused on, this is the tool we're going to use and we train up to that specific focus. And I don't think that's how data careers work anymore. When you look at a lot of job descriptions, um, we, we try and review them regularly to make sure that we're, we, we're, we're preparing our staff for the skills of the future. And there's tools in there, um, you know, G three dot J S, we haven't even got stuck into yet. And it's, I don't think we can expect to have, this is the sequel expert, this is the Power B I expert. I think it's more kind of working across a range of skills. And I think that kind of really well-rounded data professional is what we're going for in the team.
Fantastic. Right. We're coming to the last three minutes, so I'm going to be really mean and ask you a difficult question to finish with. Um, so and apologies if you have asked a question we've not quite got to do. I'm really sorry about that. It's poor, poor hosting on my part. But hopefully we got through most of them and your team were brilliant in answering them as well. And people have got your details, so I'm sure they can follow up. Um, three things you'd like to see change about local gov or, yeah, change that would make data really unlock the power of data?
Um, better communication between local authorities and more sharing and, and being open about what people are working on. Because I think sometimes we're too humble. I think some local authorities are working on amazing technical products and I think we would all learn by sharing. And I can't wait till our team have got something great to share back and I don't think it'll be long. Um, better internal communication. Um, we are very siloed still. This may be a, a Wiltshire context problem, but from a lot of other local authorities we're working with, communication is a real challenge. Um, and I, I think I G will tell me off the same as one, but a little bit less risk adversity. I think we need to be brave and take some innovative leaps. Things are changing too quickly for us to stay in a status quo. And I think we really risk being not an organisation that's going to be able to attract the data skills we need in the future to be able to get the best out of our data because of how quickly things are changing. So I think we, we need to be a bit braver in our explorations, but that's very easy saying that from my side of the table.
Brilliant. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Sam, because we, we, we thought we were going to spend most of the time talking about the war for talent, really. We're, we say, we haven't really even had a chance to do it, but we know that is just a massive, um, a massive challenge for local government in these highly specialised and technical places. Fantastic. Well, thank you so much for your time. Uh, I've really enjoyed it and I've learnt stuff. And I've, I've loved the comments as well. Been a really, um, great discussion and, uh, and your team have done a fantastic job of answering them as well. I think one of your teams probably shared your LinkedIn, uh, profile link in the chat. So you might find you're, you're quite busy over the next few days, um, answering some of those questions. And, um, thank you for the, for the positive feedback and, and Penny as well. And again to Rachel for organising it. So thanks a lot, Samantha. I really enjoyed it. And, um, you know, I look forward to doing it again.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Brilliant. Cheers.
Thanks, James. Thanks, Samantha.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it.